All right. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:03. And just so that y'all can hear me, I'm going to take my mask off. We're going to call the April 13th Edgefield County Council meeting to order. I'd ask if you'd all rise for the prayer. And Reverend Martin Ryan was going to offer the prayer tonight, but he cannot be with us, so I'm going to open us up. So if you would, just join me in a word of prayer, please. But your heavenly Father, we thank you so much for each and every individual that's here tonight. We thank you for each family that's represented here. And God, we just come before you humbly, seeking your guidance and your wisdom as we do what's best for the citizens of Edgefield County. And for those that are still arriving, like Councilwoman Ireland, we just pray for traveling mercies and help us to execute wise decisions tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Say move.
Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert. Is there any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Agenda passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the last two meeting minutes. I'll take them one at a time. First one is the March 2nd, 2021 Regular Meeting of County Council.
No move.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? I see none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right. Passes unanimously. Next one is the item of March 8th. It's a special call meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Kenyon, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those minutes pass unanimously. We do not have any guest speakers tonight. And so the next item on the agenda is our executive session. We will be briefly going into executive session to discuss a contract and personnel matters. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
No move.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Councilwoman Kenyon. Is there any discussion? If you see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right. We are adjourned for executive session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. Okay. It is 6:12. I will entertain a motion from one of council to come out of executive session.
No move. Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Councilman Campbell. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We are out of executive session. While we were in executive session, we discussed a personnel matter. And I would, as it relates to the retirement of our county administrator, I would entertain a motion to approve, I would entertain a motion regarding that discussion.
No move.
Your motion is to authorize me to...
Documents, sign the documents.
To sign the documents.
Sign the documents.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert to authorize the county chairman, County Council Chairman, to sign necessary documents for the retirement of our county administrator. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. All right. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. These are for items that are not related to a public hearing. And we do have a public hearing this evening on the ordinance adopting a 90-day moratorium. So I'd ask, has anyone signed up to speak about any other agenda items that are on Thank you, Tess. Appreciate it. Okay. So if you are signed up, and I read that you have written to speak about the moratorium, which is a public hearing item, I'm going to ask if there's anything else on the agenda that you wanted to speak about, because we are having a public hearing tonight on the moratorium. So the first individual signed up is Linda Anderson. Is there anything other than the moratorium that you would like to speak about tonight? Okay. Ms. Anderson.
The public will not give you a telephone line.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I wasn't sure if I would be able to get on to speak or not, so I'm requesting, well, I've already given you copies, and I'm requesting that this be in the official minutes. Though these two items, the moratorium and the comprehensive plan reversal, are considered separate, we would not need the moratorium had the comprehensive plan not been changed. Citizens of Edgefield County spent almost two years attending meetings and providing input into what we felt best met the desires of Edgefield County citizens and the community. Our desire to plan for growth that maintained the rural look and feel was uppermost and stated time and again. We do not want to be Columbia County with its overcrowded community, is what we've said. Contrary to what we keep hearing, the wording change to the comprehensive plan has and continues to have a major impact upon our county. This is demonstrated by the signs you see around the county, note to the LMO. The vision citizens have of Edgefield County has gotten sidetracked. The only perceived winners are the developers and property owners who stand to gain monetarily. Not all property owners are long-term residents. Many are investors. I do not believe the intent should be to make them wealthy at the expense of the citizens of Edgefield County. People are choosing to move to Edgefield County on a daily basis to escape exactly what we, the citizens, stated we did not want. Overcrowded, crammed-in housing you see popping up in Columbia County, Augusta and North Augusta. They are seeking what we are trying to preserve. All around the county, you see individual lots being sold from two to three acres to five or more acres, as people are choosing Edgefield County to live. So to say that we will send the message that Edgefield County is closed for business is a false narrative. The message we will be sending with the moratorium is that Edgefield County will not be the open-door, cookie-cutter community you see all around us. We will be the uniqueness you seek for business, industry, and your family. The moratorium will give the opportunity to slow this runaway train and make better decisions for this county and her citizens. Anyone who has attended the planning commission meetings will tell you, this county is moving way too fast. Tomorrow night, the planning commission will hear a discussion on three new subdivisions in the work session and hold public hearings on two of those. Edgefield County is in a mess and fast track to become, if not surpass, Columbia County. These actions will forever change what others think of when looking to Edgefield County for business, industry, and more importantly, becoming their forever home. Mr. Ford, consultant to the comprehensive plan and the LMO, said it best during his initial presentation. Edgefield County should focus on her uniqueness. That is where the citizens of Edgefield County were headed and thought we had achieved. Actions during the county council approval process took us in a different direction and set in motion to fast-track as many rooftops as quick as possible happen. That is what is causing great concern for the citizens of Edgefield County and has newcomers wondering if Edgefield County really is where they want to put down roots. If they are seeking the high-density living, they are choosing places that also have the activities close at hand as well. They do not come to Edgefield County seeking those housing units. The market everyone talks about is an artificial market, when all that is offered is driven by what developers offer. The true market is what people are looking for and will go out of their way to find. We currently have ordinances and zoning in place that protects us and has provided for our needs for more than 10 years. While it is required by law that the comprehensive plan be reviewed and updated every 10 years, it is not required that the whole thing be scrapped and rewritten. My recommendation beyond, upon reviewing all that has taken place, attending meetings, and actually have seen the consequences of what is taking place, is to return the comprehensive plan entirely to what the planning commission recommended to county council, including replacing those densities on the map that were removed, which gave clear indication to the planning commission, the guidelines. This recommendation is because on further review of the minutes to those three readings show other changes have taken place, and we are unclear what all the ramifications have come about through those changes.
Ms. Anderson. We, I appreciate you typing this. You've got about three paragraphs left, and you've gone five and a half minutes. So in that interest to allow others to speak, I'm going to say...
I will speak in five minutes.
Okay. And what is your name?
Louis Pastowski.
Very good. You may continue.
Concentrate on strengthening that plan and use those zoning categories we already have in place. Yes, there is a part of these issues that lie with the legislature. However, you have the ability to protect the citizenry through, those issues existed long before this high-density showed up. You, the council, have the authority to guide the planning staff, whether you want as many rooftops or you want them to give more consideration to the citizens. Begin there and move forward in a more positive manner. There are five of you county council members who represent different districts of this county. Each of you have a responsibility to represent the best interests and the desires of your constituents. Each of you have equal authority and responsibility to know what is taking place in this county and should be given equal information. Where we are today is that trust has been broken and we are a divided community. That relationship needs to be amended. Let us start today to put Edgefield County back on track to preserve, protect, and defend that which we all treasure, while welcoming in quality growth and all those newcomers seeking the same things we appreciate here. Let us grow this county together. When we work together, we all prosper. Ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren all benefit. Vote to put the 90-day moratorium in place to give us time to get it right. Vote to return the comprehensive plan back to what was recommended by the planning commission, March 2019, in its entirety, including the densities on the zoning map. You have that right. Vote to strengthen that comprehensive plan to give the tools needed to reach our goals. Vote to focus on what Edgefield County needs, not wants. We have a jail that needs to be built and other issues that need our attention. Vote to strengthen the relationship with citizens. And I'm calling on the citizens. We need to get involved, and we need to stay informed, and we need your help. Let's build Edgefield County together. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you. All right. For the second individual that signed up to speak for items other than the public hearing is, and I always pronounce this incorrectly, so, but, but you have written on here moratorium, which we have a public hearing. So you want to speak now or at the public hearing on the moratorium?
I can address the moratorium now, just like she did.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, because we have a public hearing on the moratorium. Is your subject matter the moratorium or something else?
It is a clarification of what a moratorium is.
Okay. I'm going to ask if you want to speak about the moratorium to come back at the public hearing. Because that, that is unlimited time. Yeah, it is.
Let me fix my name, so you can see.
Yeah, print it. That, that would be fantastic. If you can print it. There, there's no requirement to sign up to speak at a public hearing. So the first section of, just for those of you who are not aware, the first section to sign up is for items that are on the agenda. The second items for items that, the second sign up is for items that are not on the agenda. And then public hearing is for items that are covered in the public hearing, which is the moratorium. All right. The, the, the next individual that has signed up for the first public hearing section is Ms. Katie Ard?
I want to speak on the LMO, so I guess I wait till they...
If, if you want, if you want to come speak on the LMO and not the moratorium, come on up. Because you wrote the LMO, not the moratorium.
First and foremost, thank you all for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
The moratorium and the land management ordinance have gotten so intertwined, it's kind of hard to separate the two. So I just want to make some general points. I'm bringing this from over 30 years of marketing. And I kept hearing the last meeting, people talking about, Edgefield's closed for business, all, you know, this is, this is going to hurt Edgefield. From a marketing standpoint, Edgefield is amazing the way it is. People are coming here because of what we have to offer. We are unique, we are special, and we moved here because we love it. I have friends whose families are five, six, seven generations in Edgefield. They don't want it to change. My concerns are this, I think the moratorium should hold because I have yet to see true research on impact studies. By that, how is this going to impact our roads? How will it impact our traffic? How will it impact our utilities, our public service, our schools? Nobody's done an impact study. But I don't want us to be Grove Town and go, oh, my God, what are we doing? We have one exit. It takes us 45 minutes to get on that and own it and off the exits. What is going to happen with the road construction? In these neighborhoods, is anybody supervising the roads being put in? Are they being bedded properly and done right? The reason this is a concern is traditionally, after a neighborhood is complete, it becomes the county's responsibility. So if the roads are not properly supervised at the start, it becomes a headache for Edgefield County. More tax money gets used because heavy equipment's on those roads, tears them up, potholes. So there's one headache right there. Who's supervising that? Has anybody thought about those supervisions? Next is water runoff. That water runoff that comes out of these neighborhoods and high-density, that's damaging what we treasure of Edgefield County. It's going to hurt our waters, and it's going to hurt our aquifers. Again, there's no water going to those neighborhood, neighborhoods. We're going to use wells. You tap enough wells in an aquifer, that aquifer's going to go dry. Are the impact studies being done? Are they being required of these builders? Is anybody supervising that? Who is it? DHEC? Do we have somebody in the county that's doing it? From my knowledge, I'm not sure that's happening. Our schools, I read that the school system didn't really answer y'all whether or not they can handle all these people coming. But from what I know as a parent, we're not ready for a lot of kids. Our schools, and nobody wants their kids sticking in a trailer. No, we want them back in school, but that's another subject. Most of all, I don't want to be, we don't want to be told what we can and can't do with our land. We moved here for that right. We wanted a rural. And yes, I live way out of Martin Town Road. It doesn't affect me now. But once you start on that road, what's to say that rezoning's not going to happen to me next or my neighbors? Just, I'm asking, I'm not against progress, but let's please, please, slow this down. Let's look at it. I love this county dearly, but I see it going headlong down a road that's going to make all of us suffer. Please, please, put a hold. Let's plan growth properly. Let's don't start off running before we've learned how to walk and do it right. If we don't take care of what makes this county so incredibly special and unique, we're going to lose it, and you can't go get it back. So I also am asking anybody that can profit personally or indirectly off of this to recuse themselves, whether on the planning commission or on this council, they should recuse themselves from voting. Thank you very much for your time.
The next gentleman that's signed up said specifically for the moratorium, and that is Mr. Rick Oster.
Yes, essentially, I don't care when I speak, I can speak now.
If you don't mind, since you've wrote moratorium, I'd like to wait and put all the moratorium.
It involves...
Okay. Mr. Pedigree, you're the next. Are you willing to wait to the public hearing? Because if you go to the public hearing, I'm not timing you to five minutes either.
I would like to speak, not on the moratorium at this point, but I would also like to return at the public hearing and speak on the moratorium.
Come on up.
I'll be brief this time. Brief, brief the next time.
Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I know we've got some important decisions to make that are going to affect Edgefield County for many years to come. And in regards to the comprehensive plan and the LMO, I would like to respectfully suggest that the county consider contracting with the Upper Savannah Council of Governments to help us. Upper Savannah is located in Greenwood. They have been involved with Edgefield County for many, many years. Ms. Talbert and Mr. Campbell, I know y'all worked with them in the past. And they actually wrote our last two comprehensive plans for the county and updates to that plan. And I think they understand the rural nature of Edgefield County. They've written comprehensive plans for some other counties in the area, too. And I think they would be an invaluable resource to work with our planning commission, to work with the Atlanta consultant, to work with the citizens, and to help tailor the comprehensive plan and the LMO so that it is a better fit for Edgefield County. Because the way it's written now, I don't believe it fits Edgefield County. And so I believe that if we talked to Upper Savannah and contracted with them to help us as a consultant, that they would, that would be money well-spent to help us get these things that are so important to help they get them done right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. The next gentleman that's signed up to speak is Mr. Willie Bright, and you specifically wrote the LMO and the comp plan. Mr. Bright. Come on up.
I was, I was going to speak on the same thing you said. I just stuck with you.
Okay. You want to come up at the public hearing, though?
I'll come up.
All right. The next, thank you, sir. The next individual is Ms. Jane Mode, who wants to speak on the LMO.
Good evening, and thank you all for your time and your attention, for your service to the public, and for representing us as citizens in this county. I've lived in this county most all of my life. And my husband and I have been married 30 years, and we've lived in this county the whole time. And we've loved it, up until now, until we hear about more restrictions that might be coming. And, you know, the only ordinances we had on our property when we moved here, when we got married, I should say, were that we could only have two residences on our property, which, we live off Sweetwater Road, and we live in Chevis Creek. And so, and then we couldn't have pigs, which we didn't want anyway. But, so, but the LMO would restrict us with the type of fence we'd have and the type of flagpole if we wanted to put one of those up. Or, you know, if we wanted to have an RV, you could only have it for 45 days or less. And we do. So that would just, you know, further restrain... And we do, so that would just, you know, further restrain us, and, so because of that, I really would ask you to reconsider and go back to the comprehensive plan. Some people say money makes the world go round, and yes, it, some people say that money makes us happy, but I would ask you to think, no, love makes us happy, and love makes this county happy and makes the world go around. We do need money, but from the last meeting I was here, it sounded like our budget was in a pretty good place for Edgefield County, that we're up in the black, you know, we're not down in the red, we're not in a desperate need for these developers to come in and pay for all these, these subdivisions. So, you know, also reconsider, consider, please, the constituents who voted for you. You know, we, how many of us, how many of us citizens support the LMO? Have you heard many people support that? And how many of your constituents support going back to the comprehensive plan? So, as our liaisons, please listen to us and stand up for us as your, as your people. And also, I would also agree with Mrs. Ard, who said, if you have any personal things to attain from this, that you would recuse yourself, and thank you again.
Thank you. All right, the last individual that's signed up for the first public comment section is Mr. Kemp, and Mr. Kemp, you did write on here moratorium, so.
I'll, I'll just wait.
Wait to the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir. All right, thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is our reports. I would just ask if there's any comments on any of the reports that were in our binder this. All right, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It is a consideration of an appointment to gleams, Ms. Dorothy S. Ryans, I think you have a packet there about it. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, we are to the point in the hearing, or in the meeting where it's a public hearing, this is for ordinance number 2021780, an ordinance adopting a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for land use, development, or subdivision concept plans, and to provide for an immediate effective date. So if you would like to speak on that, the moratorium issue, I would just invite you to come up one at a time, state your name, your address, and if you know the district that you reside in, the county council district, you can state that as well, and then you have, I'd like to try and keep it to five minutes, but we're not going to be super strict. Right, but, but we're not going to be super strict on that.
Okay. Hi, folks, my name is Desdemona Pastalski, you folks already know me, I've spoken a few times, I live at 166 Rolling Hills Drive, that's Trenton, South Carolina, off of Jacob Mackey, all the way in the back, peaceful and quiet, and I like to keep it that way. Now, here we need to go about that, there's a couple of general points regarding the proposed moratorium. There has been people going around saying that the moratorium would prevent large-scale residential projects not already approved that directly contradict the goal of ensuring orderly growth. It would prevent large-scale residential projects and potentially high-density residential construction from being established in land use areas not designated for residential or designated low-density or rural agriculture under the proposed LMO. Time period is limited to 90 days or a total of 136 days since the moratorium actually began when the advertisement for the public hearing was published, per state law. Keep an open to possibility of an extension. It is a relatively small investment to ensure that our zoning is appropriate for a decade or more of future development. The moratorium does not apply to business, commercial, or industrial construction, nor does it apply to residential projects of 10 or fewer homes. It does not apply to any major subdivision already approved for development. All those projects may continue and be unaffected. No impact at all on construction of any kind in the towns of Edgefield, Johnston, Trenton, including residential subdivision projects, large or small. Residential construction jobs, employment such as subcontractors will not be impacted. There are already 800-plus homes or available subdivision lots allowed for construction in various approved projects. These already approved homes are not delayed by any kind of moratorium, and in any case are not expected to be completed during the moratorium. In short, there is an adequate supply of new construction already approved. See the public hearings coming up on Rainbow Road, Williams Lane off of 25, there's public hearings coming up in regards to all of those, which I presume will be discussed tomorrow night. It also allows time for the planning commission to fully address citizens' concerns in regards to zoning while preventing new, large-scale residential development projects that might conflict with the county's primary goal of orderly growth. It will give officials and citizens the necessary time to tailor the LMO to our county's needs. While the LMO is not expected to be fully completed by the end of the proposed moratorium, it gives the planning commission sufficient time to gain a solid idea of the final goals. Plans submitted after the moratorium can be better evaluated based on a more developed LMO. Now, we've heard a lot about businesses, and how the LMO and a moratorium will negatively impact businesses. Not necessarily true. Businesses will benefit from a moratorium because new, large-scale residential projects are being prevented from being established in areas that will be designated for commercial or industrial use under the proposed LMO. A business does not want residential development next door, on average, since it often needs the complaints by citizens about noise, odor, bright lights, delivery, traffic, and other things. Look at Generac, perfect location for where it is. No one will be bothered, traffic can move in and out nicely. Awesome, and they might even come to Edgefield to eat. Generac is expected to bring with them only a very small number of startup employees, and so there appears to be no support for claims that delay would impact new housing opportunities for arriving personnel. Folks, we're building for cyber, we're not really building for Generac. Generac happens to be incidental. We're building for the influx of the cybersecurity community, that's what this is about. The bulk of hiring is anticipated by Generac to come from Edgefield County and surrounding counties. In any case, 800 new homes or available subdivision lots are in fact approved for construction and can supply new housing. Developers' business want and need to know details of the new zoning requirements and can accept that a limited-duration moratorium may take place if it provides time for the county to improve the LMO. Responsible developers who seek to partner with the county in a positive future relationship will support rather than try to thwart county efforts into ensure orderly development. No evidence yet that any business has been unwilling to come to the county specifically because of the proposed moratorium. There is a gentleman who's looking to relocate his business from Graniteville up into Edgefield, he's got a, aptly named, a granite business, he's looking to relocate, he owns 75, up to 75 acres. Where's the Economic Development Commission on that? Why is he contacting private citizens to tell us what he wants, when he should be coming directly to you folks? Yet apparently, he's not getting a response, I do not know, but there are businesses more than willing to come here, even with a moratorium in place. No evidence yet that any business has expressed an unwillingness to come to the county, I've said that, I'm sorry. As of now, no business has stepped forward or even been named as changing plans as a direct result of the proposed moratorium. There is no evidence of any residential developer claiming harm from a moratorium. Residential developers reportedly claim they will, in fact, not be significantly impacted by a 90-day delay, but have declined to speak on record. Folks, thank you for letting me make my points.
Thank you.
Some of us got headaches researching all this stuff, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? On, as it relates to the moratorium, yes, sir, come on up, state your name, address, and.
My name's Rick Oster, live at 55 High Water Drive, Edgefield. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I would support the 90-day moratorium or pause, whatever you want to call it, on larger residential developments, but with a few caveats. Before I state those, I think it's important for context, and I think it's reasonable to address how we even arrived at this discussion today. The citizens and some of the council appear to be blindsided at the third public reading of the comprehensive plan, which essentially deconstructed the work and the wishes of the citizens that were involved in the civic process for approximately two years. This change paved the way for developers and their desires for higher-density housing, essentially in opposition to citizen input. Citizens are now speaking to right their wrong, and my sincere hope is that they will be heard. I'm in support of the 90-day pause, if indeed council and committee members wish to use the time to openly and honestly engage citizen input in an unobstructed way, it would be infinitely more desirable to hold a public meeting, subject to open meeting laws, rather than engage in machinations that fracture what just may be a consensus voice. Referring to a consensus voice as a mob mentality, it doesn't really indicate a willingness to see opposing opinions as valid. To those on the council that have listened, engaged, and even recognize previous missteps, as Councilwoman Kenyon graciously did, I offer my respect and my gratitude. I would support a 90-day pause if council and committee members are willing to explore pathways forward, as expressed by the citizens, that may challenge your own narrative. May even lead to a paradigm shift if you look deeply enough. To refuse to even consider that does not endorse representative government. I respectfully submit that people are not elected to rule, you're elected to serve and represent the citizens. There's a difference. Zoning in its most basic definition means the county controls all of the land use in the county. That's an objective fact. The zoning can be changed anytime in the future, and will carry with it the force of law, is also an indisputable fact. If council and committee members are looking for some time to engage and cogently respond to the citizens opposed to relinquishing their property rights to county government, I again support a 90-day pause. If the heavy-handed way the comprehensive plan was changed, and the fragmentation of open public meetings is any indication of how the implementation of zoning or future zoning disputes would be managed, it would appear that those opposed to zoning have some very well-rounded concerns. The phrase individual property rights has been bandied about only in that it has been tied to situations that support ongoing development. There's been a glaring absence of addressing the citizens opposed to relinquishing those individual property rights in favor of laws that are tailor-made to benefit developers. If an honest and open exploration and recognition of those voices will occur, I support a 90-day pause. I'm going to take just a moment to defend a significant group of citizens that are labeled anti-growth, anti-property rights, and anti-progress. This is a fallacy, it's either based on willful ignorance, or it's simply used by those with a different agenda to support their narrative. Controlled quality, and most importantly, equitable application of rules for growth countywide with respect of all individual property rights is supported by all of us. It can occur without draconian oversight and intrusion into the lives of the people who live here to avoid exactly that mindset. There are a lot of people coming to Edgefield to escape the places that in a mad dash to cash in on the development dollars and more rooftops destroyed exactly what was bringing people there in the first place. Edgefield can be different, we have something special. To willfully deconstruct that in an effort to get development dollars before the county next door can is a disservice to the citizens here now. If a 90-day pause is not used in something approaching what I outlined, I'm honestly ambivalent about your decision and your vote. If the same mindset and actions continue, a 90-day pause is simply theater, and there's no obvious benefit to it. Further, I think you'll ensure the loss of the confidence and the support of a substantial segment of the community. We as citizens are engaging in the civic process with the expectation that those elected to serve and represent will take that higher calling with gravity, and use this potential pause time to seek wisdom, discernment, and truly engage the public in an unobstructed, unmanipulated fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak in regards to the moratorium?
I would.
Come on up.
Uh, yes. I'm sure I can't wait up.
Edgefield County advertised.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'm so proud of you. I am, I'm so glad you liked this paper.
Okay. Um, thank you for letting me come and talk tonight, my name's Charles Kemp, I live at 31 Maze Way, Edgefield, South Carolina. And I want to tell you, you know, I thought we were coming here to try to have a big push to keep the moratorium in place, and it looks like we've got a lot of support here. I do know that the town of Edgefield, the Edgefield Town Council listened to a few of us talk the other night, and voted on a resolution to not support the moratorium. They did that without any discussion, and immediately called for a motion to vote, and didn't really give us any, give us any thought. But last night, we went to Johnston, and last night, after about 30 to 45 minutes of talking in Johnston, I mean, engaging, they're learning, well, learning, they're listening to us, what we say, Johnston is in support of the moratorium that you people passed, or that you voted on, I'm sorry. So here's some reasons I agree with you on the moratorium. First off, I gave the Edgefield paper, and last week, Arthur North did an article, stated in here, I've got some of it highlighted, 740 homes slated to be built on Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority in the near future. Bill Hickson noted in an interview, February 3rd, one and a half kids per house, that's just Bill's estimate, but he did say that, uh, which comes up to 1,100 children. And then Bill went on to say, on, February 3rd, same time, said, Bill said taxes from these new houses in the county will not provide revenue needed to pay for all the cost of educating the children in those homes. Okay, let's leave Bill alone for a minute, let's go to the Edgefield County School District, which they were given questions in March 25th, they were given about 10 questions by the Edgefield newspaper, uh, how are y'all going to handle the growth? That's what this article's about, you know, what, what are you going to be doing with this growth? And, and in their defense, look here, man, we went through a year of COVID, and I'm told that the, the school district has done a great job of navigating COVID and, and, and other things, but in their defense, they, they, they were only able to come up with some, uh, document that was dated 2018, it's a needs assessment document that was dated in 2018. And I'm here to say there's a lot that's happened between that needs assessment in 2018 and 2021, and they have not been able to, you know, as of yet, to come up with anything saying, look, we can handle all these kids. Also, moving on from the school district, let's move to the Edgefield County Administrator, Tommy Paradise, who recently resigned or is, is seeking retirement. And Tommy was asked, what are the county's projections for tax revenue increases from these, all these rooftops? What, you know, what's the county going to gain from that? And, and, and he was also asked, what are the expenditures that the county is going to encumber for all these rooftops? And Mr. Paradise said, that information is not, that is not information that is currently available. He told the paper that, he actually told me that, about a month ago, and he is being honest, and I want to tell you what, I've met Mr. Paradise once, and it was a very good meeting, and he was honest and upfront, and I wish him a good retirement. So I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus on this situation, I'm just telling you what's in the paper, and I think that speaks for. Wow. They met, they met April the 9th, and it was video. And then I've got a, it was transcribed, the video was transcribed here, and it was quite enlightening. One person at that meeting said, so we're gonna, we're gonna have this moratorium for 136 days. We're gonna have this moratorium for 136 days. We're gonna stop growth, you know, the town's gonna suffer, it's gonna be, he didn't say it at this meeting, but he's told me before, it's gonna be devastating for the town, this moratorium. But anyway, it's, after 136 days of this moratorium, this pause here, then we're gonna go back to business as usual. And he said, that's stupid. I disagree that the mor-, I don't think the moratorium is stupid. I think the moratorium is good. It is how you look at it. And what I did last night at the Johnston County or Town Council meeting, I had a glass. I poured it with half-full of water. You know, you gotta look at things with the glass is half-full or is it half-empty? Okay? That opinion, the glass is half-empty, you know, Chicken Little syndrome, everything's falling down. But the response to, what we're showing by this moratorium, which y'all have shown, is we're showing resolve, you've given a measured response, and you're showing wisdom by doing this, okay? So when somebody calls and say, hey, man, I'm thinking about moving to Edgefield County, or I'm thinking about starting a business in Edgefield County, oh, what about this moratorium? And then you freeze up and you say, well, yeah, we got a moratorium, I don't know what's going on. Or do you say, yeah, we got a moratorium? Everybody wants a piece of Edgefield County, but you gotta get in line, okay? It's coming so fast, we don't know what to do, but to shut some things down for a little bit, and then we can rebound. You just wait, okay? Everybody wants a piece of Edgefield. Another person at the meeting said, the moratorium goes away and things pick back up. Hmm. That means without any of the ordinances that will be in the LMO, it'll be the Wild, Wild West like it is today. I have to disagree with that person because it is not the Wild, Wild West today because you put a moratorium out there. It may have been the Wild, Wild West, and once the moratorium's gone, he thinks it's gonna be the Wild, Wild West then. I disagree with that. I don't think it's gonna be the Wild, Wild West then. I think once the moratorium is gone after 136 days, that it is the hope that the Planning Commission will gather information from concerned citizens, see which direction our county wants to head. If we want to be rural agricultural, they will know that, and though when the moratorium ends, yeah, we don't have it in zoning or LMO or whatever, we don't have it in law, but the Planning Commission and the county officials and the building and, you know, the zoning people will know, this is where we want Edgefield to go, and they're not gonna slip in a subdivision that does not fit what our wishes are. So we have to come up with these wishes soon. So I disagree with that, that, you know, we're gonna be the Wild, Wild West again. We'll say, last night at the meeting, Terrence Culberth, the mayor over there in Johnston, he and his people did vote to support the moratorium. Terrence was at that economic development meeting, and Terrence said that he is not against growth, he's for smart growth. He's for smart growth. I mean, that was, that was great. Terrence was one of the few that was not preaching fear, and we know fear is a liar. So kudos to Terrence. So I'm asking you to embrace the moratorium. Don't fight it anymore. Don't fight the moratorium anymore. Embrace it and tell these people that are interested in moving to Edgefield, it's a good thing, here's why. So I'd like to end with that, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the issue of the moratorium? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Ard, right, Ms. Ard?
Yeah. My name is Kate Ard. I live at 2318 Martin Town Road with my family. We've been here over 20 years. What I want to say about the moratorium is several points. Has anybody looked at the endangered species, the impact of our wildlife, our wonderful wildlife that we love, the impact of what's gonna happen to the wonderful hunting that we enjoy in this county? The moratorium needs to be on hold to, let's look at the overall effects and affects that will happen in danger of species. The Spring on Sweetwater Road is already getting damaged from sewer systems, and nobody's doing that. EPA hadn't been called in because it's not federal funds. I have a dear friend who is a lawyer in California that does all kinds of environmental law. He said that is something that needs to be looked at because, again, wastewater runoff from huge neighborhoods do long-term damaging and sometimes irreparable effects on your land. I'm not against growth, please understand that. I want quality growth done in a quality, well-thought-out development and planning. I think Mr. Pettigrew's point, use the Upper Savannah, because if you go look at Greenwood, they've done a wonderful job of starting to do the things that need to be done, and they've got a lot of growth happening there. So growth's not bad if it's done right. The other thing I would like to say is I think we will be a very stable county if it's done right, if it's done slowly and properly. So the moratorium is not a bad thing, it's just a pause to keep from rushing headlong into a long-term disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to come up? Yes, sir, Mr. Oliver.
My name is Jim Oliver. I live at 693 Curritown Road in North Augusta. Most people know that as the Merryweather community down there, and I love living there. I moved to South Carolina in 1972, right out of college. I moved, and that was at Clemson, and then I moved down here in 1984 after spending two long years up in Ann Arbor, Michigan, where it is really cold. I was on the Planning Commission for probably six, seven years, two different stints, different times. I'm no longer on the Planning Commission now, but I do have some insight. I was there whenever the Upper Savannah River Council Governments did prepare the comprehensive plan. We reviewed all that plan then as a member of the Planning Commission, and I think that's a good alternative. I think we're in too deep in some aspects with Mr. Ford, and he certainly has lost the trust of the people. And that's a sad thing. The man is, he is a good man, there's nothing wrong with him and his company. He has some great staff, it's a very small company, but I think with the help that John mentioned, Pettigrew mentioned, in regards to having the Upper Savannah Council Governments, I think that's a good idea. I would support that. Thing about PUDs, Planned Unit Developments, those are not on hold. There's no moratorium on that. And if you look, if you come to the meeting tomorrow night, you'll understand that the PUD that is being developed or proposed out here at Vettus Academy, Vettus Academy and Highway 25, across from Willie's property over there, he's just across the road from it, so he can go over and get a snack or buy him a new house over there. That's gonna be a pretty high-density development over there. And I can't remember, what is it, 200 houses going in there? 200 units? How many?
I don't know.
Somewhere like that, it's pretty high. So these PUDs are not, they're not under this moratorium at all. They can keep coming in, they keep applying to the county, the county supports them in their development of these PUDs. So we put a lot of effort in that, and we as taxpayers help support that and how these things are put together and designed. So, and there's nothing wrong with what Kevin Singletary or Doc Hart, what they do over there. I think they're great individuals, they work really hard for a planning department that is basically two people and a couple administrative people. I think they do amazing jobs, so my hat is off to them. I've worked very closely with them over the six, or the past two years with them while I was on the Planning Commission. I am strongly against these developer incentives that are in the current LMO. I talked to a gentleman, we had a meeting at the Merryweather Fire Department about five weeks ago, and it was a small meeting, a man come in there while we were sitting in the room, just talking amongst ourselves, and he said he was looking to show his grandson if he could come up to the Merryweather Fire Department and take a tour and just give you, say, his son loves fire trucks. So he wanted to come up and take a tour of the fire engines and see those. You know how your grandsons are, they come into town, they'd love to go up there. Well, of course, he was talking to people, we have known nothing about the fire department stuff there in a sense, and so he was interested, and we were just kind of throwing a bunch of things out, and he said he recently moved from Columbia County to Edgefield County, and he loves it over here. He says, I couldn't take it anymore over there in that high-density stuff, and just, he was in a development, and the thing that really hit home with me was that these HOAs, the Homeowners Association, every one of these is going to, developments is going to, is gonna have an HOA. And his HOA is now at about $5,000 a year. And whenever you have that, as someone else mentioned, the infrastructure, getting the infrastructure for these developments, they need to be at the highest level as possible, and that those construction, water lines, road, and all the infrastructure that is there doesn't come back to all the citizens. The developers need to have a bunch of feet in the game here, so to speak. They need to really get in and behind what they're wanting to do, rather than come in and make this development and they're gone, you know, six weeks down the road until they sell 75% of those lots on that land, then the Homeowners Association is totally responsible for everything in there. That includes all the upkeeps of all the roads, the retention basin, the safety, everything else that's in there. While I'm speaking of retention basins, let me just quickly say, a lot of these developments are coming in, they're talking about green space. Do not think that they don't include the retention basin, those run-up basins that have a big fence around them, that is part of their green space. That's green space, but you can't use it. You can't have a picnic there, you can't go fishing in there, you can't do anything there. So HOA fees can go up extremely a lot. No sewer service throughout the county, really. I'm anxious to hear tomorrow night what is said about this high-density development up here at, near Vettus Academy and 25. That's all sewer, as far as I understand, that there'll be sewer lines there and it's right along Highway 25. That is an area that, okay, it could support those. So I think if you don't have sewer system in an area where you're proposing some of these developments, my gut feeling tells me we need to have at least a minimum of two acres. Two acres there, some land perks better than others. Down where I'm at in Merryweather, a lot of that land doesn't perk real well, and I made those points in regards to the Anson points of division development. But it fell on deaf ears. I think what is being done now and what happened the other night in the economic development meeting, I thought was great. That was the best discussion I had heard back and forth between Hart, Doc Clark, and the other members that were there, the mayors of the cities, and Roger, you were there, I think, if I'm not mistaken at that meeting, I'm not sure, but there was, and I thought it was a really good back and forth. I think we need more of those. I've rambled on enough. I think that what we have now is a need to get the community together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. All right, is there anyone else that would like to come up for the public hearing as it relates to the moratorium? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Appreciate everybody's comments. First item under old business is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number 2021-781, an ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly-owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Aiken County. And I would just ask if our interim administrator would like to add any comments to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Exhibit one.
I've only been working with the county for a couple of days, but it seems like I've been here a lifetime already, so. This is, for those that don't know, this is my third opportunity for working with the county as the interim, and so I have a lot of background of a lot of these issues that we're talking about, because we talked about some of these in 2011, we talked about them in 2015, 2012, and what we have here tonight is a multi-jurisdictional park. It's in Aiken County. We have five of these agreements. Currently, we're getting $64,800 from these multi-county parks. We get 1% of the fee in lieu. So you have this one tonight, and then you'll have another one later. So they're developing several of these industrial parks, which from a tax standpoint, it's advantageous for the industries that go in there if it's a multi-county park. And so we're asking you to approve this tonight, and it's a good revenue with no problems because the industries are in the other area.
Second reading, I would entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2021-781.
That's a move.
This has been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ordnance passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number 2021-780, an ordinance adopting a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for land use, development, or subdivision concept plans, and to provide for an immediate effective date. This is what we just held a public hearing on. So I would entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2021-780.
That's a move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Ireland, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert. I'd ask, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
I just wanted to first thank everybody who spoke tonight, of course, on the moratorium and the public hearing and in the first public comment period. The one thing we didn't hear tonight at the podium, as I recall, was anybody saying they were against the moratorium. Everybody was for it. I too am for it. But what you don't know, probably, is that all of us have tons of phone calls from people who are pro, you know, as in, don't do a moratorium. So I want to make sure that, you know, while you didn't hear that tonight, we have a lot behind the scenes of people calling us or meeting with us and such. So because of that, I wanted to make sure that, and what's been said here tonight, I think it's important to reset the table just a little bit to make sure we add some context to what everybody's heard, again, those here and those not here. So I want to be clear that we're only pausing one small segment of our county's development, major subdivisions. A major subdivision is defined as the creation of more than 10 lots. Simple definition. The moratorium does not stop industrial development. It does not stop commercial development. It does not stop business development. It does not stop home sales. It does not stop any individual for selling their home or buying a home. It does not stop any home building in an already-approved major subdivision. And if you take every available lot, only in major subdivisions being built, there are over 250. industrial development. It does not stop commercial development. It does not stop business development. It does not stop home sales. It does not stop any individual for selling their home or buying a home. It does not stop any home building in an already-approved major subdivision. And if you take every available lot, only in major subdivisions being built, there are over 250 buildable lots right now. And those can be built on right now, and there are hundreds more that are available to buy and build on. And those are just in major subdivisions. This moratorium does not affect at all the towns of Johnston, Edgefield, and Trenton. All our towns continue to accept major subdivisions, approve them, and build them. The towns are separate entities from the county. They have their own planning commissions and their own ordinances. Again, there is no impact on the towns at all. The moratorium does not impact planned unit developments, or PUDs, as you heard a minute ago. And PUDs are, PUDs are major subdivisions that can bypass the planning commission and come directly to county council. But developers make that decision if they want a PUD, and state law says a PUD can be done in that matter. So, developers who do that, if you're interested, they come to us, and they bring us a PUD, which is a major subdivision. And if they go this route, we can actually put greater restrictions on them, not fewer. And they work on our timeline, not theirs. So what does this moratorium impact, again? Only new major subdivisions in the county that have not been yet submitted for official review to the planning commission. That's all. It means that the county will continue to process all paperwork and permits for planning commission-approved developments. The county will also accept information from developers, and the planning commission can and will discuss them with developers in work sessions, but not as a part of their regular meeting for action. This moratorium is as small and as narrow as you can get. It is the least impactful thing we can do and need to do as a county. And I believe any developer worth their salt won't just read a headline and say, "Oh, they have a moratorium. They've stopped progress in that county. Let's move on." I don't believe developers are that shallow or that easily frightened. As a matter of fact, I had a developer come to me and say, "This 90-day moratorium is not an issue." I believe it's important to citizens, the planning commission, and the county council to enact this pause. Also, in case you think a flood of these major subdivisions are going to come in at the end of 90 days, let me also say that in the past 12 months, we've had six major subdivisions come to our door. So, we won't be overwhelmed with work to do on major subdivisions after 90 days. What I've said is all background, so what's the end game? Why is this moratorium important? I believe this pause is critical to our ability to make headway on producing a quality land management ordinance, or LMO. We're about to start small group public meetings, followed by large group public meetings. Everyone will have their say, and the process will be transparent. This pause in major subdivisions means the planning commission and citizens can focus on the LMO and its work without worrying about some dichotomy in current ordinances and what the future ordinances might look like, particularly in high-density major housing developments. We have to get this right. This pause now allows the planning commission to listen to citizen views at various public meetings, gather data, then start changing the draft LMO. They might not finish the LMO and pass it on to the county council in the next 90-plus days, but I believe they'll be close. And most importantly, they and everyone else will know where we're headed in relation to the LMO. That information will be important to developers who want to build these major subdivisions in particular, and the work the planning commission do, will do, will help everyone. So I guess, let me end by being perfectly clear, Edgefield County is open for business. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Only thing that I would add is I'm in favor of a short pause. I think it is a good idea while we get this process straight. But I am confident that while we're going to see major changes in the LMO as it currently stands, because I have not heard one person, not one, including those sitting up here that's in favor of the current draft, I don't think we're going to get that done in 136 days or 90 days to get it right, and we need to get it right. And so my concern would be that we come back in 90 days, and we want to extend the moratorium. And I'm grateful, Mr. Campbell, you shared the letters that we got from the towns of Edgefield, the town of Trenton, the superintendent of schools, and, and from Mr. Hare, the Water and Sewer Authority, basically in opposition to this, as well as others, because I think that needs to be said, that we did receive comments from both sides. So again, I just want to reiterate, my concern is that you recognize the pause, but don't try and extend this again for another 90 days when this period ends, as we work diligently to continue Edgefield's history of being special, of being unique, and being all the things that we love, but that's not going to happen, in my opinion, in 90 to 136 days. So, with that, I will ask one more time, is there any other comments? All in favor of, excuse me one second, of approving second reading of ordinance number 2021-780, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, that ordinance passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. First item under new business, and we have, we have a big agenda tonight, so, 13 more items, is first reading, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2021-785, an ordinance amending the county of Edgefield Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan, and this is our exhibit three. Administrator, I'm going to make, take a minute to talk about this.
Can I, can I make a comment concerning the, the moratorium?
Yeah.
Some comments were made concerning the small group meeting.
Yeah.
Everybody should have received a postcard. We already have a listing of about 135 people that have said that they want to go ahead and be involved in some way. Kevin has 20 emails and 15 calls, it's four o'clock this afternoon, has not returned yet, of other individuals that have questions or potentially would want to get on this list. We are hoping, our goal is, in the next couple of weeks, to start holding small group meetings, so that citizens could get together, and there will be a time to discuss your concerns concerning the LMO and what's happening in the county. Those will be held in all the districts, so that each district will have a group meeting of at least one time, some of the larger districts, District Two and District Five, there will probably be several group meetings. But more information will come out. What we will do is, because we don't want to have 60, 70, 80 people show up to a meeting, we'll be inviting a group of no more than 40, so we could easily have 20 with one, 20 with Doc, 20 with Kevin, be able to give everybody a chance to respond. We will then be transparent by getting the information that was at that meeting on a website, so everybody could see it. And then we will go ahead, at the end of the period, gather all this information, present it to the planning commission, and then start looking at what modifications, deletions, additions to the LMO are necessary. And that's, will take a couple of months. Then there'll be a public hearing, and after that public hearing, the changes would be ratified by the planning commission, and then it goes to county council. So let's say, it's going to take some time, but we want, as I think everybody said, we want to get it right. And we want to get the input. So we're already having those discussions, and hopefully, within maybe the latter part of next week, we'll be able to start making announcement that meeting number one will be in District Four. I'm just making this, and, and, yeah, we'll start with you. And these are the individuals, and, and then we'll go from district to district, and the ones that have more people signed up than we could fit in, we'll have a second meeting, then a third meeting. And if more people want to sign up, then we'll have more meetings until everybody within the entire county that wants to hear about this will have that opportunity. So again, we're moving forward, we, we're going to have a procedure set up shortly, and that's what I've been meaning with most all today to get that resolved. So I, I think we're, county's going forward, it's a good thing, and the end result, whether we continue with Robert Company, whether we go with the Upper Santa Cog, we will hopefully get the LMO right as far as what the county would like.
Good. Go ahead, Tiffany.
Roger, is there, you know, we've heard a lot of comments about these small group meetings and not being televised or livestream or anything. Do we have any plan in place that we can let people know what does happen within these small group meetings?
The intention will be, okay, and, and we're still working out the details, but the basic detail is, we would like to have 10 to 20 people in each group. You get too many more than that, and all of a sudden, not everybody could speak they would like to in a small group. Doc and Kevin, who most of you know, understand what's in the LMO, understand what's been happening, and they will be leading up these different groups. So if we go to a district, and we have less than 20 people, only one of them will be there. But if we have more than 20, then we'll split them up, and Kevin will take one group, Doc will take another group. They'll go through a series of questions, get information, hear any comments that you have concerning the LMO, what you think should be done in the county. They'll use the old-fashioned way, we'll have a flip chart, and we'll be writing all these things down. At the end of the meeting, they will then take their phone, they'll take a picture of it, then they'll post it on the website, so that everybody could see what happened in a particular meeting or a particular night. And they'll then go to the next group, the next group, the next group. We'll have probably two to three of these a week, depending on the district and how many people sign up. And then we'll continue till we reach that point. Or even think that there might be some individuals that are homebound or really can't get out, maybe even have a Zoom meeting, so that they could go ahead and give comments. But we want to give everybody the opportunity to be able to get their viewpoints stated, and to get it up on a website, so everybody could see what we have. A lot of information, and we'll begin collecting a lot of data during this time, and that's why it'll take Kevin several weeks to pull this all together, meet with the planning commission, and then move forward on any changes with the LMO.
My question would be, and you probably mentioned, but I didn't hear, and I apologize if I did. So, prime example, I'm District Four.
Mm-hmm.
So how would I let my constituents know where would the meeting be?
Okay. Right now in District Four, we have about a dozen people that have already contacted the planning office, saying, "We want to be involved in this process. We got this postcard. What can we do?" So we would call those 12 people up and say that, and I'll just give you, that on the 27th, we're going to be meeting somewhere in the Bettis Academy, at a church or some community center, to have that meeting. We'd like to have the planning commission member from that district, we'd like to have the council member from that district, and then Kevin and Doc would be there at the meeting. But we will be notifying them based on this list that we have. Now, once we start having these meetings, I suspect we're going to get a lot more people calling up or emailing, saying, "Hey, we heard you had meetings. We want to be involved in these meetings." How do we get involved? And then we'll set up more meetings within the districts. But we'll have a minimum of one meeting in every district, but I, what I see happening is we're going to have multiple meetings in probably every district, as, by the time we get all of a sudden done. And we will work with each one of the council members as to where you think the best place would be to hold the meeting within the district.
Roger, I would, I would like to say that in District Number One, my phone had been ringing constantly, and they, they really interested in when the meeting's going to be held up there. And I think you explained it well tonight, so I hope that they would take it on consideration. And everybody that spoke tonight, we definitely appreciate your all concern, because we are very interested in listening to what the citizens have to say, not only in District One, but in all the whole parts of the county. And so, I'm, I'm so thankful that we's moving forward with these, getting these meetings set up, and so that our, our phone can stop ringing some.
The staff will ring.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I'll just make one comment about that. Part of this pause, if you will, has been for the planning commissioners themselves to get up to speed with the current document, as well as what existed before this document was passed. And I think they're grateful for the time that they've had to study it, as I'm sure you have as well. Oh, I'm going to just, thank you for the reminder. For everyone who spoke, or who maybe submitted an email to be read, they will be part of our minutes and part of the public document, because we just don't have time to read them all tonight. We got 13 more items. So, are we done talking about the, the small group meetings?
Thank you for letting me make a comment.
No, I think that was perfect, perfect timing. The clarification is good. So as it relates to item number one, approval of first reading of ordinance number 2021-785, an ordinance amending the county of Edgefield Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan. I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments, and then, so, like our last subject, where there was multiple conversations taking place, not, not all conversations were public, when that change took place in the third reading. And, and that was never about a specific development or a specific set of developments. It was about a 504-square-mile area known as Edgefield County, specifically two sections, the two Merryweather sections. And it was about lot sizes. But if we go back in time to 2016, when we had a small group meeting, which ended up being close to 500 people at, at Sweetwater Baptist Church, the conversation was about sewage. And how can we prevent the annexation of North Augusta? Because some of my constituents are very concerned about that. And the primary reason people, landowners, choose to have their land annexed by another municipality is due to services that municipality can offer. And that, that service in this case is primarily sewage systems. And so council went about a, a couple-year period where we were looking at ways that we could partner with the Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority to expand sewage, in an effort to provide a diversity of housing, but more importantly, in an effort to control our own development in that portion of the county which was being annexed. And so that was the primary motivation of changing the verbiage in the comprehensive plan, from my perspective. But when we sent it back last month to the planning commission to review, the consultant wrote a letter that that change, really, when you look at the averages, which is what the comprehensive plan is about, it's about averages, when you look at that change, it was very insignificant, because averages actually may be a lot greater than we think they are, because we have such a large territory, which doesn't percolate, which means large lots for septic, and a very large area, including in Merryweather, which will never receive sewage, because we simply don't have the economics, the economic ability to expand sewage. So that was the, the primary thing behind that change, but since the change really is very minimal, I would make the motion to change it back. So I would make the motion to approve ordinance number 2021-785. So you're seconding it? All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2021-784, an ordinance providing for the fiscal year 2021-2022 general operating budget and establishing ancillary budgets for debt service, E911, administration, industrial park, solid waste disposal, victim bill of rights, emergency medical services, road maintenance, tri-county solicitor, assistant solicitor, school resource officers one, two, three, and four, and five, and six, event security, sheriff, grants, clerk of courts, pre-trial intervention, SRO grant, and criminal domestic violence. Basically, it's a budget for 2021 and 2022. I would ask, we did have a work session last month, and I would just ask our administrator if there's anything he would like to add.
You asked for several changes. They added up to about $590-some thousand. Most of that was for a few raises. The sheriff came and asked for some raises within his department. You have stated you would go ahead and fund 50% of it. would go ahead and fund fifty percent of it now and fifty percent at a later date. And then we had another major change to put more money into the industrial park for roads, Generac, and for the signage that they'll have there. But this is the first reading for this particular ordinance.
I would entertain a motion to approve first reading ordinance number 2021-784.
So moved, chairman. First read.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbot.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campbell. Is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. First reading of ordinance number 2021-784 passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval to authorize the county administrator to sign authorization on the U.S. Treasury Department to receive funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and place those funds in a special account set aside for those funds, and this is an annual thing, right?
No, it is not. So we're, we're looking at receiving approximately five-point-three million dollars from the federal government. We should get six, fifty percent of that within six months, another fifty percent twelve months thereafter. Currently, what the federal government is telling us is that we could only use this for water, sewer, or broadband. We believe that there's going to be more information coming out in the very near future that maybe will allow that to be broadened as to what you could use these funds for. But this would go ahead and give the administrator the ability to sign for that first fifty percent, that two-point-six-five million dollars for the county. The only thing that I'd also like to add to this is the fact that I believe that we have two council individuals, two councilwomen, that have been appointed for some help with broadband. I have already gotten calls from Will Williams with the Edgefield County Partnership, and with Gary Stukesbury, who is the chairman of Aken Cooperative, and they would like to have a meeting to sit down and start talking about where in the county do we want to put broadband, how can the county help with this all, we already got hands raised up where they would like the broadband located. And again, this is so critical in today's society for more individuals that want to work from home. So I will be contacting you to set up a meeting, hopefully next week, with those two gentlemen, to find out what they already have intention to do, and then where they would like, we would like them to possibly use some of our funds. We're not obligating any funds right now, but somewhere in the future, we'll be taking, or they'll, I'm sure they're going to be asking for some of this funding. And I would think that would be reasonable if we could find it to include certain areas in the county that we feel are very critical.
Jack and Tiffany, don't forget about District Number One.[794.43][794.43](laughing). I'll put my plug in.
I would entertain a motion to approve, to authorize the county administrator to sign authorization to receive these funds.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbot, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any further discussion? All right, say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Passes unanimously, it's the next item, it's an annual thing I got. It's consideration of approval to provide the National Fire Safety Council seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for fire training, fire safety training materials.
This is a very minor item, but Mr. Paradise wanted to make sure the council realized that we were giving seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. If there was any objections to it, he wanted to hear. Otherwise, it's something we've just been doing for a long time, he just wants you to be aware of it.
I'd entertain a motion to approve to provide the National Fire Safety Council seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for fire training, fire safety training materials.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell. Seconded by Ms. Ireland, is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval to reclassify one of six heavy equipment operators from full-time to part-time.
We have six equipment operators that work on the road crew. Unfortunately, we're almost always having vacancies. Currently, we have two vacancies out of the six, and so this individual would like to retire, or at least slow down, and so we're looking to go ahead and change his position from full-time to part-time, and by you allowing us to do this, he would be able to continue working. He's a motor grader operator, critical on the dirt roads, so we're, we're asking to go ahead and move him from part-time, from full-time to part-time.
I'd entertain a motion to approve to reclassify one of our six heavy equipment operators from full-time to part-time. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Ireland. Seconded by Vice Chairman Talbot, is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval of a request from the town of Edgefield to attach outdoor lighting to the Edgefield County Library to illuminate the Tompkins Alley, and that is in Exhibit C. And I would ask the minister.
The town of Edgefield received a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant to go ahead and make improvements to the alley. They currently have lights strung across the alley between the general store and the welcome center. They'd like to go ahead and string those kind of lights between the library, which the county owns, and the welcome center. Their intention is to build, in fact, they already have it built, another arborway that they're going to be placing there, to kind of welcome people back in that area, and they feel with that lighting, it would just go ahead and enhance the alley. So they're asking your permission to be able to hang the lights off the library, not for electricity or anything else, just to use the building.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve a request from the town of Edgefield to attach outdoor lighting to the Edgefield County Library to eliminate the Tompkins Alley.
So moved, chairman.
Motion was made by Vice Chairman Talbot, and I will second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval of entering into a contract for a medical director services from, from the Self-Medical Group.
You have the contract before you. Garrett Lynn is here tonight, if you have any questions concerning the qualifications, but Self has given us this individual that would be used to sign off on, in all of our emergency services that we have, and it's required by state law, and so we'd like you to go ahead and give approval for that tonight.
Garrett, did you want to say anything tonight? If you want to, I mean, I'm just giving you the opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did meet with Dr. Washburn, he came and made a site visit, and Mr. Cooper and Mr. Talbot got to meet him. We had a good meeting, good connection. We did get our contract negotiated with them, so that it protects the interest of the EMS Service and the county as well. We were able to negotiate that at a little bit lower price, but still get the same benefits. And I do have it set up where any decisions that he makes, he has to go, we have to be in agreeance on that. Also with the training, he will come down four hours a month here in Edgefield, so that, we want to make sure that was there. So I have him for four hours a month to, whether it's training or anything we need to discuss, he will be available for that, so everything is in place, and I think it's ready to go.
Any council members have any questions for, for Mr. Lynn?
Thank you for meeting with him and moving all this out and getting all this together.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all you do. Mr. Lynn, we appreciate it. Because I'd entertain a motion to approve, the approval of entering into a contract for medical director services from Self Medical Group.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion was made by Vice Chairman Talbot, seconded by Dr. Kenyon, is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval to amend the rental policy at Bettis Park to allow baseball fields to be rented at ten dollars an hour without lights, and that's also in Exhibit Eight, if you want to look at that. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
Our current policy is, per day, this would go ahead and allow it to be per hour. So this was approved by the Recreation Committee.
I'd entertain a motion to approve, approval to amend the rental policy at Bettis Park to allow baseball fields to be rented at ten dollars an hour without lights.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Vice, by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Ms. Ireland. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2021-783, and ordinance repealing Section 2314 of the Edgefield County Code of Ordinances, and I would ask our administrator to explain that, please.
You're probably all familiar with the Neighborhood Center, it's near the Edgefield Gym. That building, a portion of it burnt down about fifteen years ago, and, but the county owns it, we had a number of operations in there. We moved those just a few years ago, and we would now like to go ahead and sell that property. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to move the meeting along, guys.
Long day, huh?[1242.25][1242.25](laughing).
It's Exhibit.
Oh, the county rep, sorry.[1248.75][1248.75](laughing). I'll have to see my eye doctor tomorrow.[1253.04][1253.04](laughing). This is just a procedural thing, we set up a special fund for the recreation funding. Tommy found out recently that that was against the ordinance, so this would just go ahead and allow us to continue with putting the recreation funds into a special fund.
I would entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 2021-783. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Ireland, seconded by Councilman Campbell, is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. And that passes unanimously. Now we're on to number ten, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2021-782, and ordinance authorizing the negotiation, execution, and delivery of an agreement of purchase and sale and the conveyance of certain properties between Edgefield County and John McCracken and his successors and his sons.
Now I understand why you all gave me this blank look. I remember back in 2011 and 2015, this is a great, for the county, we've been wanting to get that property removed. The intention is to, the buyer would like to remove the building and is looking at putting some kind of housing in there. And it's in the city, our town of Edgefield, so they wouldn't have to worry about any more touring for a building, so.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 2021-782.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbot, and I will second it. Is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Next item has to do with you, sir, and I will just say we're very glad that we have this on our agenda. This is consideration of approval of a temporary employment agreement with Roger LaDuke, and it's self-explanatory, it's Exhibit 11. I would entertain a motion to approve that employment agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Ireland, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbot, is there any discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Next item is consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to negotiate with Dixie Bell Incorporated concerning termination or alter, alternation of an industrial park pond lease.
In 2014, county council passed a fifteen-year lease so that Dixie Bell could go ahead and take water out of the pond, that's just beyond where Generac is at, transport that water across US-25 to their orchard. Typically, you look at peaches from the growing, from the initiation, to when they go ahead and take the trees out, it's about a fifteen-year period, that's why they had this lease period. And they wanted to, they put pumping in, they put some water lines in. Well, this is the same land that we intend to sell to Generac. So we have a couple of issues that are going to have to be dealt with here. One, we have to find out, does Generac even want to have that pond, as far as that sale? If they don't, then we could keep the pond for Dixie Bell, and we may have to reroute the water line, which is something that the county would have to pay for. If they want that pond, because they need that as part of their land, then that becomes a whole different types of negotiation that we may have to have with Dixie Bell, because they had intended to have this water available for those crops for the next nine years. So in either, either case, I would like your permission to start the negotiation and start the discussion with it. I've already had discussions with Will Williams, and he and I need to have some further ones, but this would give me authority to go ahead and negotiate how we're going to go ahead and deal with the pond and the piping.
Excuse me, I, I don't, I'm lost. I don't understand. So, you're saying where, where the industrial park's located at now?
Correct.
Okay. There's a pond there?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And so from there, the water goes where?
Okay, from that pond, they, they have a pump at the pond, and then they had put piping and water pipe, and it goes all the way through the industrial park underneath US-25 to the peach orchards on the other side of the road. It was a fifteen-year lease, we get one-thousand dollars per year to lease the pond and the water that's in it. So they would like to continue, I'm sure Dixie Bell, and using that pond. And we had the, one conflict in the fact that we had agreed to sell to Generac that land for a hundred dollars, so that they could expand their plant. The expansion is going to probably start somewhere later this year or early next year, so we have a little bit of time to deal with this, but it's something that we need to take care of, so that as they're in the design or planning phase of the expansion, we can decide, do we need an easement from Generac for the water line? Could it be underneath their parking lot? Can they use the pond? You know, there's a number of issues that are going to be involved with Dixie Bell and with Generac.
So this, this is just off, giving you authorization to work that out?
Authorization to negotiate, and then come back with you with the solution or settlement that we would have.
Because we don't know what Generac wants to use the pond for.
We do not know that at this point in time. We don't think they were going to want to, because again, they're going to have to bring in field dirt, and there's a lot of other issues involved with that, if they want to use that pond.
Does that answer your question, Jackie? Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve authorizing the county administrator to negotiate with Dixie Bell Incorporated concerning termination or alteration, alternation of the industrial park pond lease.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbot, and I will second it. Is there any further discussion? Say none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Are you, opposed? Okay, so four in favor, one opposed. Thank you. All right, last item on the agenda is consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with site selection for the Law Enforcement Center as an Edgefield County facility only, including working with Mosley Architects to investigate one or more sites.
Last year, at around this time, Mosley came before county council and made a report concerning the needs study for the future Law Enforcement Center. You know, what size the jail should be, what size they should have for the magistrate's office, what size they should have for sheriff's office. Of course, we had COVID and a lot of delays with that. There's been discussion of the potentiality of working with Saluda County. Of course, every county wants to have their own facility. We're at the point, and Sheriff Roland is here to speak on this, if you'd like, but we believe we're at the point where we're ready to start looking at sites. There's probably two or three sites that we'll be looking at. We don't have anything specifically in mind right now, even though they have looked at a couple of them. But before we could go ahead and identify a site, we really need to have someone do an environmental study, someone to look at the soils, to make sure this is something from a foundational standpoint, to put a building on it, there's no contamination from groundwater, et cetera, and there's good access from a road standpoint. I talked to Mosley, they'd be more than willing to go ahead if we want to have them do this work for site selection. They're estimating it'll be about four thousand dollars to review a site, assuming we would have two to three sites that we might want to review, we're talking somewhere between eight and twelve thousand dollars. Additionally, I know that if you ask Sheriff Roland and anybody else within the magistrate's office or the sheriff's department, there's been a need for this center and there's been a need for this center and especially for the jail for a long time. When I was here in twenty-eleven, we discussed it back then. When I was here in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, we discussed it back then. And it's only gotten worse. And depending on how we want to schedule all this, we could easily be three or four years from now and still not have the completion of the law enforcement center and the jail. And so I'd like to make a suggestion on taking a three-prong approach for the law enforcement center. One, I'd like you to consider approving Mosley to start looking at some sites. If you feel we still need to go ahead and further look at having an operation with Saluda County, then I would say we need to have Mosley look at the cost-benefit analysis of having that done. Secondly, I would like your approval to start pulling together the committee to select an architect to build, to come up with the design drawings for this building. That alone, just to request a, request for qualifications, and then you get probably half a dozen to a dozen different firms coming in here, narrowing it down to three, then interviewing them. That's going to take a couple of months. Then we would be asking the firm that we select to go ahead and give us a proposal. And so it'll be three to four months before we could come back to County Council with saying that we would like to hire this firm to do the design for the center. And then third component of this is we need to have funding, long-term funding. And we want to have a nonprofit. There's some tax advantages to having a nonprofit developed and to then go out for bonds. To develop a nonprofit, to go out for bonds, we're again talking probably another six months before it would be coming back to you for approval. But if we waited and said, let's do the site selection, and let's go ahead and hire the architect, and then go ahead and get the bonds, it'll be well over a year from now before we actually get anything really started. And this will go ahead and start moving the timetable forward so we could actually start with some design for this building and for getting this out to bids. So I'm happy to do whatever steps you'd like us to take, but I, the more we can move this forward, we do have the one cent sales tax money. We'll get our first check in May. We're expecting probably about one point two to one point three million dollars every year coming in from the one cent sales tax. So by, let's see, May, then there's a August, November. By February of next year, we will have received about that one point two, one point three million dollars. More than enough money to go ahead and pay for any site investigation, to start paying for any engineering that has to be done, any architectural fees that had to be done. And by that time, we would hopefully have the bonding and the nonprofit in place for the additional funds that we'll take. We're estimating about twenty-eight million dollars, depending on what they finally come up with. We will be needing approximately sixteen to eighteen million dollars from this nonprofit or from the bond. So we're, we're talking about a large project. And in, in talking to several of the council members here, these would be the steps that we could take now by authorizing the administrator to move forward, getting the architect, doing the site selection. And every step along the way, it comes back to County Council for your, your final approval. But we'd like to go ahead and start this process going forward as quickly as possible.
For the site selection?
Yes.
So I would just ask, before we entertain a motion, do you have any questions for the administrator about this process? Mr. Campbell?
Not so much a question, so much as a comment. So on the agenda, it says we would be approving an Edgefield County facility only. And that does not do what the administrator just told us, which would be ask Mosley to look at, again, Saluda or whatever. So let me see if I can add a little bit of context to what we just said. You heard the administrator, twenty-eight million dollar estimated project, just to buy the land and build law enforcement center. That's an enormous project. I think sometimes we hear these numbers and don't consider how large they really are. It's so large that it's more than double our annual budget. We don't see projects this lo- large, but maybe every generation or two. That's how big it is. Also, we mustn't forget that this money is coming from citizens. We all know the law enforcement center construction is coming from the capital project sales tax. That means citizens inside and outside the county pay for it, and that's great. It's a great way to pay for it. But have any of us really stopped to think about the cost after it's built? The cost of running this facility won't be paid for out of the capital project sales tax. It won't be paid for with a grant or some other form of free or reduced money. Yet the cost will be paid by citizens of Edgefield County through their property taxes. And that cost to run this facility will be significantly higher than we pay today. And I don't believe the future growth that we've all talked about is going to take care of all that. Again, let me point out that I think this, this law enforcement center is a necessity. It is not a, it is not a whim. It is a need. We must have it. But we've got to handle this carefully. And I know the chairman and the vice chairman and the sheriff and the former administrator have had meetings with Saluda County officials and have traveled to locations that have multi-county jails. I believe they've done a lot of work, but I'm from the generation that says we should trust what they say, but let's verify. What's wrong with making sure that this is the right decision, and the right decision being one county or multi-county? And let me explain what that means. County Council has not been given any specific written information on the work that has been done. No written report that outlines the pros and the cons. No written information on who could, should, might pay for what. No real discussion on whether other counties have been contacted and what the pros and cons might be. We're being asked tonight to make a major decision. I contend the most major decision that will be made from a cost perspective by this council for decades to come. When this council gets general information from the staff and the chairman each month in preparing for these meetings, sometimes we receive advanced emails that go through details of issues, or we receive exhibits in our notebooks that do the same. When we don't get written information, it generally means it's so minor that we don't need it. We, that can't be what we're saying here. But here we sit with only anecdotal information. We heard why things might not work. We have no letters or reports from anyone involved telling us that. And so let me ask my fellow council members this. If you were building this law enforcement center with your own money, would you accept this information as is? I've heard discussions from the chairman, the former administrator, and the sheriff, but I've only heard discussions. I've not seen any actual numbers. I've not seen any deep dive on how it can work and not, and how it can't work. What I appreciate is the time all of them have put into this together, but I'm not convinced we have the right information to make an informed decision. I'm concerned we're jumping the gun here. We don't have to hurry this along. We can find a way to see a real in-depth study to determine the pros and cons and get the cost better and understand. Why can't we ensure we're getting the complete story? In the case of a law enforcement center, of course, there's a political side and a cost side. Sometimes one side can drive the other. I remind council that we get one chance to get this decision right. This authorization being proposed is not three readings. It is one reading. And if we vote on this tonight, we're locked into a decision. If we approve this tonight, it sets us down a path on a one-county law enforcement center. You know, I would recommend that after everybody has their say, that maybe we ought to table this and think about it a little more and, and maybe take something else up at the next meeting and ask the administrator if he has any different information or more information than what he said tonight. But that's what I wanted to bring up.
Mr. Campbell, is that a motion? You make that as a motion?
Not yet. I was going to give everybody a chance to, if they may want to talk about that.
I do think we need to table it and do more research on it.
So is that a motion? You're making a motion to table it, Mr. Vice Chairman?
My, then my, my motion would be that we table the law enforcement center's one-county or multi-county decision until we believe we have sufficient information to move forward. Part of that motion includes having our interim administrator determine and recommend to us, you know, in writing what he said tonight, what's the best way to gather this information, whether through current staff or even a consultant?
If I could respond to that, I, I did have extensive discussions with Mosley. And one of the things that, they, they have worked with multi-county jails and authorities, especially up in Virginia. That is something that they could do. If you would like to see the, the costs and the benefits of having a standalone versus having one with both counties. Of course, number one, you had to have a buy-in between both counties and both sheriffs. So that's something we'd have to work on. But I feel like, I don't think I could, especially given the number of hours I plan on working and the LMO and some of these other issues, be able to do the analysis that I believe that you're looking for and that I, I believe would be valuable. If you would like to table it, I would suggest that since you have already used Mosley, Mosley already knows what the needs are, at least for our side of the equation, that we ask them to look into some of the costs of sharing a facility versus a standalone so that you would have something in writing that you could maybe then make a more a decision that would benefit both parties.
Financially based decision?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Ireland.
Since Sheriff Roland is here, he might speak to this as well. Is Saluda out? I mean, are they still in the game?
Hard question to answer, but I would tell you that in our meetings with council and Sheriff Price, Sheriff Price and I were saying, shoot, the logistics involved is probably our number one issue. And something that's not been said in our meetings, you know, this building, and I don't know if it comes by this building, it, it is not an app. It is a bill for, for weight. So we're not just talking about sharing the cost of jail with Saluda. We're also being taken money and building a new sheriff's office. I, I, I'm all in, joining the magistrate's court in there. I would maintain joining, you know, debt with us, anything else to make this long-term operation more feasible for taxpayers. I think Sheriff Price would tell you the exact same thing I just said and said with the, and then the logistics of running back and forth to court, to paying the court. And my reservations are probably less than Sheriff Price. And my case ain't the same as I've seen my arrest and long riding is in the southern tip of the county. It's just out of his northeast. He takes a hefty off the road, two hours to make the case if we go junction on one twenty-one or near one twenty-one, which it has to be. Have to have water, have to have soup, have to have propane, no matter where we go. So we're limited to that. It's got to be town, twenty-five, one twenty-one. Moving, moving line and the cost, the double cost to Edgefield County, building up soup or sheriff's office, next to court, et cetera. That alone puts the price, what I think is reasonable. Even if we save money in the short term. We're going to burn it up in cars, employees, transportation up and down the road. Lot, lot of smaller details that we don't all agree on in, in doing Saluda and in Edgefield. Working that magistrate's court out. We don't know if a magistrate can be assigned to the facility or not. We are struggling to get that question answered. So in Saluda, we're actually wanting to keep their magistrate's office in the town of Saluda. Again, that's the building, the construction back and forth. And I'm not saying that it can be done by zooming or some other technical feature, but that, that's not a withdrawn technical element. Same here. And then there was trouble about, can a Saluda County magistrate set an Edgefield County up and vice versa? We, we struggled to get that answered. I, I'm leaning that way. I, I believe it can be done if we do decide to join. And last, I'll just tell you that I feel a constitutional obligation on the constitution of electorship. And I think I should run the Edgefield County Jail, not Saluda County Jail. And constitutionally, I don't think I should give up the opportunity of operating the jail for citizens of Edgefield County. I'm sure it was enough, camp. As I have crossed the state and looked at a couple of jails that are shared, they failed. They failed from one county couldn't produce their share. They've now come to agreements, and the sheriff of the most successful county is now taking care of all of it, although he gets a fee from the other county. It was not a long-term plan. He's had to change. And his jail is twenty-five, thirty miles away from his office. The Orangeburg Precinct, and I think Chairman Cooper would agree, is impressive. It's huge. It's hard for us to fit our needs into what we saw in Orangeburg. Orangeburg, the joint agreement, they, Big County failed that. Orangeburg left us in the past. They operate it very well. I have seen there's seventeen municipalities cooperating in that jail. Seventeen municipalities in Orangeburg County. So I can give it, it's, it's just a little bit. And I don't think, if, if they're short term, you know, I'm not sure. And it takes smart mind and mind to put the business to it to, to tell us what the short-term benefit costs of saving money. But I can tell you from a law enforcement standpoint, and the logistics of operating a court, a hospital, magistrate's court, accompanying the Swiss House of Representatives, the way and tear on the sheriff's office. Or where, if, if it's all in that facility, the way and tear of that facility is going to be expensive in the long run. The more we consolidate, I think people will agree whether it be magistrate or magistrate. Anybody, any other county, the next thing I know, it's still that you produce a long term. I think, I think we're making money back in short amount of time, just like, you know, you're managing to pull back.
But first, we have to make sure that Saluda even wants to continue with this, right? I mean, that's like...
Yeah, I, I'm mostly for Sheriff Price, but we've been in mobile, always, we actually be ruling about all forms. And see, like I, I think we, I think we can go through two jails first of all.
So as it relates to point number thirteen, authorizing you to, to engage Mosley Architects for a site selection, we could edit it to say, to include the potential of a multi-county jail with Saluda because they have the, the background of doing multi-county jails in other states. What I know to be true is Virginia, that, that was something that was initiated by the legislature, and the funding is vastly different than it is in South Carolina. And so their experience would be invaluable to us.
They get bonuses for having a joint facility.
So, you know, our state legislature has not given us that incentive. I wish they would. I think it'd be fantastic because there's a lot of synergies that take place when that happens. But that's very different than two rural counties trying to go it alone, in my opinion. But Mosley could help us with that, right, with those numbers?
What I think you're looking at, and what I think Councilmember Campbell said, is we need to get some hard numbers, or at least some estimates of what the cost would be if we had a shared facility versus separate facilities.
Well, that would be at least a start, and, and I do want to say this, that the sheriff's a man of integrity. I don't doubt anything he has said in any of his meetings or anything. But I just think as the fiduciary responsibility of a county council and the so large an investment we have to make, I, I just think it'd be worth us taking one last look at some numbers and just understanding and maybe understand the politics better, understanding the law enforcement side, legal side better. You know, all those things, not that we have to be experts, but I do think... Not that we have to be experts, but I do think, and if Mosley could put something together, I think that would, that would help us, and we may end up with an Edgefield County only facility, but I'd like to know that we've done it in a way that we're satisfied that ten years from now, somebody's gonna say, well, how stupid we're all, all five of us, that we didn't look at a multi-county thing and didn't do it. I'd like to say that we were smart enough to have looked at everything.
So how would you recommend changing the wording on number thirteen?
I'm personally fine with anything except not limiting us just to an Edgefield County only facilities, my personal thing. If that's Mosley bringing us something, if that's, if that's an interim step to get to that, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm looking at the administrator, but I don't know if he has any answers on that either, but...
If you could give us the authority to go to Mosley, and I only say Mosley because they're probably the, the leading experts in here, they have done this in Virginia quite a bit, and even though the cost-revenue sharing that the state provides is different than South Carolina, building the facility is still the same, of having a joint facility. I think they could go ahead and come up with some data. If it's not enough, they could come up with some additional data, but at least get something, they may not be able to get it by May, but they could, because we only have three weeks between this and the next meeting, but they could certainly hopefully get us something by June, so that you could then make a, an informed decision as to what would be the best for the county and its citizens.
So what if we said, "Consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with site selection for the law enforcement center as an Edgefield County facility, including working with Mosley Architects to investigate one or more sites, potentially to include Saluda." A joint, potentially to include a joint facility with Saluda.
And we really won't be looking at specific sites at this point in time, until we could go ahead and answer the question of if it's gonna be a standalone or a multi-facility.
I have a question. I know you said Mosley Architects, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming that Mosley Architects concrete, we have, have we looked at anyone else? Or that's who? We just automatically go on, we're Mosley?
Mosley did the analysis to determine what was needed. It was a need study and determined the size, determined the estimate for the new jail, the new law enforcement center, the magistrate's office. So they're familiar with our operation. They have done this in the past. All we're doing is extending their contract to include now getting us a little more information on the cost-benefit analysis of a standalone versus multi-jurisdictional facility. This is still not hiring Mosley to do the architectural drawings. That, that contract alone will be probably close to $2 million. So this is just having them spend, or spending some of our money to get further information.
To answer your question, they also construct the majority of the facilities in the state as well. That's one of the reasons we've selected them. I mean, in the, you know, in the multi-county region, multi-state region.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to go through a selection and taking another month or two to go ahead and find someone that'll do the analysis.
In fact, when we talked about going on a field trip to tour their, their facility in North Carolina, they're, they're the ones that constructed that one in North Carolina.
What I can say about your proposal, Mr. Chairman, is I would not want to limit Mosley to just Saluda County. There are other counties around us too. Why not just say multi-county and let them look at the counties? They may come up with something we haven't thought of.
Fair enough. Why don't you word it the way you, you would like it? And, I'll give you a second.
We just changed an Edgefield County facility on to a multi-county, right?
To investigate one or more sites, potentially to include a multi-county, the financial feasibility of a multi-county site.
I think that's it, without the word "only" in there, it was after a facility.
Did you catch that?
As an Edgefield County facility or a multi-county facility, including working with Mosley?
That's right.
Guess we need the motion, we're all on the same wavelength, that's what the motion is.
What you've written down, would you read it back?
It's gonna be consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with site selection for the law enforcement center as an Edgefield County facility, including working with Mosley Architects to investigate, I mean, Edgefield County, or, I'm sorry, law enforcement center as an Edgefield County multi-county facility, including working with Mosley Architects to investigate one or more sites.
I think you have to take out the part that says...
An Edgefield County facility or a multi-county facility?
That, also the proceed with site selection, because we're not asking them to proceed with site selection.
So you are saying proceed or not proceed?
Not.
Not.
You gotta take out those words. So you're authorizing the county administrator to... To proceed with the, a law enforcement center for Edgefield County, including the multi, the way you worded it at that point, the multi-county...
Proceed with the law enforcement center, not saying exactly what proceeding with, we're just leaving out site selection.
Right. Once, once we come back and council decides whether it should be standalone or multi, then we could go with the other things that I discussed tonight.
Consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with the law enforcement center as an Edgefield County multi-county facility.
Law enforcement center for Edgefield County or a multi...
So, for the law enforcement center for Edgefield County.
I'm gonna have to read it back, please. It's a joint, multi, not multi.
Your mission is right. So, consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with the law enforcement center for Edgefield County multi-county facility.
Or.
Or, or a multi-county, I'm sorry. Let me start over. Consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with the law enforcement center for Edgefield County multi-county facility, including working with Mosley Architects to...
Edgefield County facility or a multi-county facility?
Or a.
Or a multi-county facility.
Gotcha. Okay, let's try it. Consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with the law enforcement center for Edgefield County multi-county facility, including working with Mosley Architects to...
Edgefield County facility or a multi-county facility?
Or a.
Or a multi-county facility.
Gotcha. Okay, let's try it. Consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with the law enforcement center for Edgefield County or a multi-county facility, including working with Mosley Architects to investigate one or more sites.
To, to investigate the financial feasibility, right? Because we're not looking at sites with this.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
To, to investigate the financial feasibility of either a standalone or a multi-county facility.
Feasibility of one or more sites.
Yes. That would be succinct.
Hold on a second.
Sorry, Taz.
That's okay.
My, Mr. Chairman, my question would be, should we use the word "financial"? Because we were looking at feasibility in all aspects. I would think they could look at more than just finances.
You can take the word "financial" out of it.
The feasibility of one or more sites.
Okay. Consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to proceed with the law enforcement center for Edgefield County or a multi-county facility, including working with Mosley Architects, to investigate feasibility of one or more sites.
The feasibility of one or more sites.
The feasibility of one or more sites.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
I will, I will second that motion. Is there any, did you want it repeated?
I'm just checking.
Okay. Got a little humor going on up here. All right, is there any further discussion?
Is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none or in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right. That consideration of approval has passed unanimously. We thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public for any item that is not on the agenda tonight, and I don't know if I can see down there. Taz, did anyone sign up?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
All right, we have two, two individuals that signed up for, first one is Ms. Katie Ard. She's still here? Okay, and that was on the LMO, and then the second individual is Mr. Charles Kemp, dealing with county growth.
Anyway, thank y'all for the time tonight, and thank you for voting the way you did. You know, it feels like, you know, we're just sitting here, Edgefield, Little Edgefield, and we have, we have this impending growth, you know, coming from the south, coming from Augusta, or coming from Columbia County, people wanting to escape, people wanting to come, you know, live in our county. And it seems like the growth is occurring on the south end down there near Aiken, but I believe that the, that the, the growth would be best suited if it were to occur around Johnston and Edgefield, and I think that you're, if, if possible, and I think that your, your mayors of each of those towns would really enjoy that if we had, you know, more people, because that's what I keep hearing, we need, you know, we need more commerce here, you know? We need a grocery store here, you know? We need this, we need that, if we could kind of center it around Edgefield somehow. And there's a book called Rural by Design, I think you're familiar with, and the book costs 200 bucks, and you get it online for a hundred dollars, but I think they do talk about that theory, is that right?
Mr. Arnt is very knowledgeable. I would highly recommend that book.
So, you know, that might be something to consider in the future, is, that, that would make the mayors happy, that'd make the towns happy, the town of Johnston and the town of Edgefield. I'm leaving out Trenton, because I think Trenton won't stay the same. That's just my opinion. But I just wanted to leave that thought with you, that, you know, maybe that would be a bright way to develop counties around existing town centers that we already have.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Administrator, is there any additional comments?
Just to follow up on what I stated earlier concerning the LMO and the process, the intention would be that I'll be sending the council members and the chairman of the planning commission and the assistant chairman of proposed procedure in the next couple of days as to how we want to conduct and when we will be conducting these meetings concerning these postcards that everybody has. I would like to go ahead and get your consent on that, so that we could then move it forward. Then, once we develop how we're gonna do this, in other words, there's gonna be 20 people, and tomorrow night, Kevin is gonna be talking to the planning commission on some of the questions and what information we're hoping to receive from these meetings. So that's, they're, they're working on that end of it as to what's gonna actually take place at the meetings, but we, they, we need to get this train moving, and we need to, and so I will go ahead and, and get it started by getting each of you, and then the planning commission, once I receive comments back, I'll make any revisions that are necessary, and then I'll send it back out again to you all. And then, the goal is, when I talk to Kevin, would be approximately two weeks from now, or the last week in April, the first week in May, is when we would start holding, hopefully, our first meeting. And if you figure, let's just say there's gonna be 250 people that sign up, we're talking at least 12 to 15 meetings. And if you figure three meetings per week, we're talking at least four or five weeks. But that's gonna depend on your schedule, and I know that one of our council members is gonna be unavailable for a short period of time. It may even involve one of you filling in for one of these council members at some of these meetings. But we'd like to have the planning commission, we'd like to have the council to at least be present to hear some of the things that are going on. But that, that is our goal, we want to make it very transparent. It'll be probably one of the, I'll spend as, probably as much on this one item in the next few months as I do on all the other items that I'll be working with the county council, because what I heard in talking to each of you individually, this is by far and away the most important item here at this point in time. And then, once we get that information, we have it, and we get it out on the website, we could then start moving forward to actually making whatever changes we will with the LMO. And again, we'll be working with the county and Aiken Electric Co-op on the broadband. Hope to get that moving very quickly, and of course, Dixie Bell is very critical, especially since Generac will be expanding in the very near future, and then, of course, we got the law enforcement center. If there's other major items that you, other than the day-to-day things that come up that you would like me to be working on, just, you all know about my email address, my phone number, and just feel free to contact me, I know several of you have already, and that's, that's great.
Okay, I would like, I would like to ask Mr. Rogers, so I wanna get this clear, on tomorrow night, six o'clock, the constituents can't speak.
It, it's always a public meeting, and they could always talk at the planning commission meeting.
Is it tomorrow night or Thursday night?
It's tomorrow, it's tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
And I think the, the work session is a, is at five.
I believe that's correct.
And that's not a, that's not a...
They're really not looking for the input at that point in time, but it's at the public meeting at six o'clock. But again, one of the things we hope to come out of that meeting, Kevin and I had worked up a tentative arrangement of what this meeting would, what the group meetings are gonna look like, and, and we need to get established, what do we want to get out of these group meetings? And it's gotta be consistent, so whatever we're trying to get out of, if we're in District One, we're still getting the same questions and information out of District Five. They're very different.
Right.
And the responses we get from District One might be different from the responses we get from District Five, but we need to know what people would like to see specifically in their district, and that's why we're holding it by district. But also, how is that gonna affect the LMO? Because District One's gonna be different with the LMO than District Five. So again, that's why it's important to meet in the district. At the very end, we probably will have an overflow crowd, you know, there might be a few people from District One and Two and Three and Four and Five, and we might just have a joint meeting, an at-large meeting or two for those that are still wanting to speak that haven't had an opportunity. But this will be one time, we don't want people to come to every meeting and just be speaking at every meeting, but we want everybody to be heard.
Your question was specifically for tomorrow night, and they have, they have a pretty significant agenda, and I'm, I'm asking, I don't know, the last item is where you're gonna be talking about the small group meetings, but the agenda ahead of that are all...
Planning commission.
Planning commission items. Are any of those items public hearing items?
I, I am not, I have not seen the agenda.
I don't, I don't know.
That's the question I was asking. You know, you might have some constituents there that wanna ask about specific items in their community, whatever, can they do that at the meet tomorrow?
Yeah, you, you're welcome.
Yes.
All right. On those two items, that are public hearing items. All right. Did you have any other items for your report?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just have two real quick things. First of all, I just want to thank Roger Laduke for, for stepping in. We're grateful that you're here. As, as you indicated, you've been with us more than, more than once, and you've come with a wealth of knowledge, and we're grateful. And the second item that I just want to share is, we're experiencing good problems. I mean, the fact that, that we're growing is a good thing, and I know it's hard, because things do change when, when growth happens, but, but we have someone in the industrial park now for the first time that's gonna change the road. But, but we have someone, uh, in the industrial park now for the first time that's gonna change the road. There's gonna be new signage out there, and it's gonna be transformational for Edgefield County. And that's something we've waited a long time for. That's great. So it's a time to celebrate. Um, and the growing pains that we are experiencing, you know? Anything good, there's always a little bit of pain. There's that phrase, you know, "no pain, no gain." So let's, let's look at it as a good thing, not a negative thing. And then, at the end of the day, I believe these small group meetings will help us get to know one another, those that live in our district. I think that's a great thing. So I hope, if you haven't signed up already, that you will. You'll partake in those small group meetings, get to know your planning commissioner, get to know your county council rep. And, um, we have a great future. So that's all I have, unless there's a question. For me, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is made by Councilwoman Ireland, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert. Is there any discussion? Seeing none or in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you, guys. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. This I wanted to show you. You might wanna take a picture of it. So I don't know what Leanne gave you. This is the, and you can have this, actually, you can...